Did he ever run a little bit late?
Okay.
Guess we'll call the workshop to order at six ten P M on August sixth. Miss Jasmine.
Yeah. I'm sad when she emailed me and said that she was leaving us.
Right.
You ready to just go into it?
Yep, let's go for it.
So the top page where I hang out is just a summary of the current year and then a summary from the budget for next year. So the first column of numbers is cash that we shared this year with. Then you have the projected revenue and then expenses and cash you have at nine three forty-five. Budget revenue and expenses for next year and cash you have at nine three twenty-six. So I had gotten the, we have QuickBooks back up through June. So I had the actuals through June, so I estimated July odd September revenue and expenses based on sort of do you think that you was gonna happen in those three months? Or just based off the trend or prior history? When I go through the revenue, try and be a little conservative on the revenue side and on expenses, try and have a little bit of fishing in there. So the general fund, which includes the general or admin, the fire, library, rescue, the parking rack departments, started this year with four hundred forty-five thousand cash. We have projected revenues of three hundred fifteen thousand, expenses of two hundred eighty-nine thousand. So we have cash of two hundred seventy thousand at the end of this year. Make sure we have three hundred thirty-six thousand revenue, three hundred fifty-two thousand expense, so our cash would decrease to two hundred fifty-four thousand. The special revenue fund, the street had five hundred eighty-five thousand cash to start this year. Projected to have two hundred seventy-six thousand revenue, one hundred fourteen thousand expense, so our cash would increase to seven hundred forty-seven thousand. Revenue next year of two hundred sixty-three thousand, expenses of one hundred twenty-five thousand, so our cash would increase to one hundred eighty, eight hundred eighty-five thousand. Key notes, started here about eighty-three thousand, projected to have about eighty-nine thousand in this year. And then I always budget a big expense just to have some budget authority if we come up something we wanna use that for, if we have eight-five thousand budgeted. So our cash would decrease to ninety, ninety-two thousand on that. The C B A is the tip, we had just under one point six million this year. Projected to have just under two million at the end of this year. And then the big tip project should be ending, so our tip proceeds should be funded as last next year for estimate cash to be two million twenty-eight thousand. On the enterprise funds, the electric had three hundred sixty-one thousand start this year. We have five hundred eighty-two thousand revenue, five hundred sixty thousand expense, so our cash increases to three hundred eighty-three thousand. Revenue next year, five hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred seventy-seven thousand expense, so our cash decreases to three hundred eighty-three thousand. Water started with two hundred seventy-eight thousand, one hundred sixty-nine thousand revenue this year, one hundred twenty-six thousand expense. Cash reserve would increase to three hundred twenty-one thousand. Revenue next year, one hundred sixty-three thousand, one hundred two thousand expense, so our cash increases to three hundred eighty-three. Sewer fund had a hundred sixty thousand start the year, a hundred sixty-nine thousand revenue, a hundred ninety-eight thousand expense, so our cash decreases to one hundred thirty-one thousand. Next year we have a hundred thirty thousand revenue, only ninety-six thousand expense, so we have an increase of one hundred sixty-five thousand. Overall, for the village, we started this year about three point three million, projected to have three million, add a forty-four thousand at the end of this year, and then four point one million at the end of next year. Page twenty, or page two, give you some actual cash history. Let's see, actually, two thousand seventeen, you guys actually had a cap sit, a cap balance in the general fund. In two thousand and eighteen, we were only at forty-four thousand, we've grown that all the way up to about two hundred seventy thousand at the end of this year. So a lot of improvement there. Streets, all your sales tax money goes into the street reserve or the street funds. We've built some really good cash reserves there, it started from a hundred and five thousand in two thousand and sixteen. And based on the current budget, we have eight hundred eighty-five thousand, so we have a lot of street cash that we probably need to be utilizing on streets somehow. Enterprise funds, we've had some big growth across the board on those. The electric has gone from two hundred twenty thousand in two thousand and sixteen, projected budget next year, we got three hundred sixty-three thousand, so about a hundred and four thousand dollar increase. Water's gone from two hundred twenty thousand up to three hundred eighty-three thousand. Sewers got from eighty-one thousand to one hundred sixty-five thousand, so really big growth in all the utility funds. Third page is a comparison of your valuation levies and taxes. That could have just as small an increase in your valuation, we haven't had too much for increases in the last couple of years. I don't know what you guys saw when you got your notices earlier this summer on valuation increases, if you had big increases or over expecting. But you guys have typically maxed out your levy at forty-five cents plus whatever we can levy for interlocals, and your only interlocals is gonna be a little bit of law enforcement. Based on that, your tax request would be a hundred thirty thousand in nineteen, so your levy would be forty-eight and a half cents. We actually had a decrease from a year ago, because we had some additional interlocals and rescue that weren't actually paying anymore, except in the exception for this. So our levy actually would decrease forty-nine point three cents and about forty-eight point five. I'd be paying on how that final valuation comes in, but the tax request should be forty-eight, close to where we know that.
What's in our locals we got right now? We got the Cass County one, for, like, um, the prior rescue, right?
For the whole county.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have law enforcement that we're paying, that we pay a little bit, and that's the only one that we're actually paying as far as interlocal agreements.
Okay.
So that's the only one that we actually take for the property tax levy.
Oh, okay, so, right, I thought we were signing up again for, like, EMS services for my account.
Totally do.
Yeah, you probably do have some other interlocals that the only ones you pay, they can levy taxes for, or they do actually pay for the service. Page four is new, so they got rid of the restricted funds calculation that we've had in the past, and we just put in the tax request tab. Basically, the cap is your prior year taxes plus whatever percentage growth you had, plus inflation percentage, which is five percent. First year and the conversion, there is a conversion of your unused restricted funds authority, which is at the bottom, which is thirty-one hundred dollars. Basically, what it means is we could increase our taxes by about ten thousand, over up against the budget limit, so we can actually increase that any tighter than where we're actually at right now, so. We will, there will be a carry toward on the unused property tax cap, but I don't see if we would ever need to use that. So page five gives you the detail for the actual departments, system, the general or the admin. The first column of numbers will be the actuals for twenty-one, twenty-two, then you have the actuals for twenty-two, twenty-three, actuals for twenty-two, twenty-four, the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, the projections for twenty-four, twenty-five, and then the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. So the general fund, some of your bigger revenue items, I mean, a lot of these are, in most of this department, are just the normal operating expenses that are pretty consistent year to year. The revenue, the property taxes, that says we have a decision three thousand, that's the max on our levy. A little bit below that is the equalization. We did get a pretty good bump in our equalization that we'll get from state, this year we got about sixty-four thousand, next year we're projecting about seventy-five thousand. If you go back to twenty-one, twenty-two, we were only getting twenty-two thousand, so we've seen about over fifty thousand dollar increase in that aid from the state. So that's good, we have some additional funding. Investment interest, all the interest for the village pretty much goes into the general, that's about fifty thousand a year, motor vehicle actions about sixteen thousand. So on the wages, with the change in personnel, I tried to budget for well watch you have an extra based on hours, between Darlene and Jim, the janitor, the deputy. So she thought she'd work maybe eighty, ten hours a week, so I tried to factor those in. So the wages that would actually go in the general, because those are, the clerk wages are allocated from the different departments, you have about forty-two thousand, that goes into general, insurance is about twenty-two thousand. The festival fees are about fifteen thousand. Computer support and repair maintenance, pay quite a bit on that, that's about sixteen thousand a year that we pay for. Supplies about twelve thousand. I don't have anything for any equipment or any improvements, or is the, anything that, or, a year ago, we did budget twenty thousand for nuisance, you haven't done really much of that? Is there, is that something you guys wanna keep in that budget, is that twenty thousand, I think typically?
For the nuisance properties, I think we should.
I think we should, keep it so. What can we do for a mower again, too? I think in general.
Yeah, no, we're probably going in the streets.
Three, that's okay.
A way of wanting to spend there.
I don't know.
We do have a lot of. So basically, the general or the admin is basically anything for this building from the library, so is there any other stuff that we need to do?
Off the top of my head, I don't think so.
Okay. Yeah, the repairs, I can budget it three thousand, we haven't typically spent close to that, so we'll try and be a little bit high on that one. Page six is the fire. I basically set their budget the same as it was a year ago, we budgeted forty-three thousand five hundred, so that's why I have their expenses at. We do get sixty-six hundred dollars from the rural board, so then I just balance that with property taxes, so we've got thirty-six thousand nine hundred of property taxes that would go to fire. The expenses that we had in fire were in terms about fifty-two hundred. We do have nineteen thousand budget for capital outlay, we've kind of been spending about that same amount every year, and budgeting about that nineteen thousand, so I went ahead and upped that in the budget, is that?
That's better.
Do you think that's adequate to have just nineteen thousand, or is that too much, or is there more that we need to do?
I don't think. What's the number on the new fire truck, they ordered that, left it?
That's for the rules.
For the rules, okay, okay.
Yeah, 'cause we bumped in.
Okay.
So like, we budgeted like five thousand for repairs, haven't come really close to that, so we try and be a little bit high on that. For good on fire, page seven is the library, and I did actually have their budget that they had prepared. So a year ago, we basically set their budget at thirty thousand a year, the budget that they prepared this year was thirty-five thousand one eighty-five. They had an increase in wages, about twenty-two thousand, really does kind of go with me, does it have an increase on? Do we want to, right, where do you wanna set their, their budget at?
What did you say that they asked, Morgan, I can't remember?
Thirty-five thousand one eighty-five is what they came up with for their budget expenses this year.
Should we maybe do thirty-eight, because their computer has been twenty sixteen, so it does.
They did have a thousand in there for, for a new computer, I believe.
And Alena's on her way, she thought it was at seven, so she's on her way, but.
Can we come back to the library?
What?
Can we come back to the library?
I'm getting to do that after.
Can we come back to library?
Yeah.
We'll come back.
Page eight is the rescue. So the revenue there, this year we're projected about seventy-two hundred, which is quite a bit, last time we had in the prior year, twenty-two was about twenty-three thousand, fifteen thousand, and fourteen thousand. This year, we're down to about seventy-two hundred dollars. Budget next year, I did budget ten.
Well, it's gonna change because we switched to a different collector of it, and we've raised the prices for the ambulances now, so.
Okay.
It was real way off, it was off by like twelve or twelve.
Okay.
I would say, I'd leave it at ten for now.
Okay.
I mean, we can always adjust it later if we have to.
Their expenses, the total expenses in the budget was eighteen thousand this year, a year ago, we budgeted twenty thousand six hundred seventy-five. Is there anything for a rescue that we know? A year ago, we spent a hundred and two thousand on the.
Was for ambulance.
Yeah, so we're good on that.
Yeah, there might be some equipment they might, I have to update, so I have to.
I'd leave, I'd leave the capital outlay at ten thousand.
You go up at ten thousand then for that?
Yeah.
Okay. Rescue expenses are pretty consistent year to year on a lot of those. Too much discuss on that?
Then go back to the vibrations here.
Okay. As I said earlier, the budget that they had submitted, had expenses of thirty-five thousand one eighty-five. A year ago, I mean, they had been quite a bit above that the prior years, and we decided we didn't wanna spend the fifty-five, close to fifty thousand that we've been spending this year on the libraries, we set their budget at thirty. Based on the projections that I had done for this year, they were gonna come in about twenty-seven thousand, so they actually came in below, or will come in below that three thousand unless they would obviously spend more.
We do have a few things that were added since, just a few expenses that I just posted in different things that I have the discrepancies on if you wanted to see.
Are you talking about for the July piano?
For August piano, in going forward.
Yeah, so when I go through, I try and project a lot of that.
And the eight hundred dollars for the million X, I don't know if it made it to that, to what you would have in your future.
Okay, so that eight hundred dollars is what we pay every year?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I looked at that one, because we had been paying it normally earlier in the year, and I didn't see that we could pay that, so.
It's on the wrong line, I am on, I've looked at it for, it just came through.
Yeah, it gets supply lines, so the dues and fees, but yeah, that is an annual fee.
Okay, so yeah, so their projections, their total expenses this year will be, right out of that thirty thousand, or probably a little bit less. As I said, the budget that they had prepared for next year, the expenses were thirty-five thousand one eighty-five. So a little bit you guys wanted to do as far as if you wanted to basically cut their budget to a lower number, or if we're okay with the thirty-five thousand?
Probably okay with thirty-five, because I mean, they're getting donations in, and they've done everything that we've asked them to, so it's a lot of share, they're really making progress. So I think maybe thirty-eight would be just a little question.
At least thirty-six, make it around a number.
Well, we know.
Which are?
Let's do thirty-eight just to.
Is that okay if you guys?
Thirty-eight?
Yeah, I mean, we, tight.
No, you guys, you really cut down on the expenses, and a lot of it was the wages, hoping.
And like, gotten the grants that we've asked for, and done everything that we've asked in last year.
Everything we've asked, you, you either tried, or you've accomplished, so we appreciate that.
We have, I have pulled one grant that for sure came through, and cut three others in the harbor, so. And also, we've been getting donations in for, I've been asking for donations, we got our summer reading covered for pretty much on our own, and we're sent to the library this year. And donations for entertainment and other things that come out to the, I would say, we got at least conservatively twelve hundred dollars in donations for everything from three D, between three D printing, people who have brought the summer reading.
And mainly physical items, not necessarily cash value.
Right, but still, that's, yeah.
And part of that year also, what I mentioned was, we didn't have a library in between, I started on February fourth, so part of the fiscal year was, you know, was covering. But there weren't no prep programs, so maybe during that time, so that's why I wanted, you know, adding that.
Now, we appreciate what you guys have asked.
Thank you.
Park and Rec, we haven't really done hardly anything over the last few years. They had five hundred dollars of donations that we showed for this year. We, we've always budgeted thirty-five thousand for improvements, and then thirty-seven thousand five hundred for grants, basically a fifty-fifty grant. I have that in the budget for next year. And then they don't have, like, line items on their expenses, we just have park and rec expense. We budgeted seven five hundred for this year, projected was just over seven thousand, I have seven five hundred dollars in the budget for next year, so. Thoughts or discussion on park and rec?
With our grant being done, is there anything that we need to do?
We just have to. We just have to have final inspection, we, they put in foul polls today. I think that's, with that grant, because the bulls weren't in the grants. Sometime this month, we'll have a walk-through on the park, from the grant, and we gotta give final numbers from the office, other than that, it will be done.
So we, so we this time tried to get this year, but we moved it in?
No, this is carryover from last year.
Like, seventy-four hundred dollars of carryover from last year, like, either in October or November, but it's for the bull this year.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there is nothing that will be carried over.
Okay. So budgeting for next year? What we wanna?
Can we ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, sure.
Um, one, what all, so I think Stephanie, you mentioned a couple weeks ago that there were a couple of things that came out of current rec budget. We know the bathroom cleaning, but you mentioned uniforms and stuff and things, do you remember?
Well, that's what's in the order.
Okay.
So like, that wouldn't apply at this point, because we don't have a good team or anything.
Gotcha, okay.
See, what, for what you guys do is Greenwood Fund Day is seventy-five hundred.
Okay.
But the other stuff is for like fifty-fifty grants, and we always put the seventy-five thousand in there in case we ever wanna put lights up at the field at some time.
For actual parking stalls.
Yeah, right. So, that's basically a capital outlay account.
Okay.
So, not saying they're ever gonna get, they're, it's there in case we ever get a good deal.
Right, so, and that, in that, on that subject, we would like to explore the concession stand, and then make sure that we have ballfield racing things. So something that we would like to explore for next year, and then also maybe a secondary shed or something to keep all of that in, so that we could use concession stand as an actual concession stand while we get the ballfield rental teams and such.
Do you guys, have you checked and priced anything out for any of that stuff yet?
Yeah, we have, so we went over and looked at it in the concession stand and looked around.
It's pretty rough.
And we feel like it's still usable.
You think that could be like the extra shed?
Well, so, we're kind of debating on if we, you know, repaint that, fix some of the things, make that the concession stand, and then get a different.
Different shed for the stuff you store, like the bases and things like that, so you can throw everything in.
We have wonderful merits, not.
Yeah, so, so we kind of like added, we, I got estimates and some quotes on things of like, start off the materials and things, of even be for concession stand, like a popcorn machine, those types of things. And I have in here, you know, expenses for repairs, because I know that just like in the past, when they would use it, a breaker would go a lot every time, they would.
They'd only use like one thing at a time.
Yes, yes, so, I mean, we're not against if we use the existing concession stand as the storage and get something else for concession stands. Either way, I got a price for like a ten by ten shed, whether we end up using that for a concession stand or storage. But we, when we were kind of discussing it, you know, we want our big focus to be finalizing all these things that we need to set up for the fields, that we can charge these fees. Like getting the scoreboard installed, getting the concession stand where we need it to be doing repairs, whether that is that building or another existing building that we get. That that's kind of, we wanna make sure that we have the right equipment for the coaches to be able to rate it themselves when they're done. Which they've mentioned to us that they would be willing to do that, we just need to have the equipment for them to do that. So, but, another question that we have too is, so, for, we have a scoreboard, but it needs to be installed. So do we need to account for the cost of maintenance or somebody installing the scoreboard, like, would that come out of our budget, or if that's something?
The scoreboard.
Okay, so, because there are some things that, like, maintenance does in the park. But I didn't know if, like, for instance, they, well, watch these go and re-spaint it, that comes out of our budget, okay? Because there are some things in here that I have quoted, but I just wasn't sure if that's something.
And that, and that one needs to be done like a few years, that's not.
Yeah, yeah, but things like repainting, the horseshoe pits, the lines on the basketball courts.
So it'll be like the cost of the materials.
So, I mean, I got like specific line item quotes for all of those things, so I don't know, like, if you want, like, we have a total for all of the items. Like the chalk markers and drag mats and rakes and brooms for the fields, the equipment that we would need for us to maintain it, but then the coaches do it and they're renting out and using the facility. For two thousand two hundred eighty-six dollars.
So altogether, your total for like everything that you're looking at, what would be the numbers for that? Because that's basically what he's looking for.
Okay, so, well, I know how, like.
I mean, that stuff right there would have been supplies, so.
Yeah, and I think that there's some things that we currently have, but we need to see if the coaches need more or more, all these, but I have that, and then I have for us getting the concession stand going, so the equipment that we would need, new paints, preparing the items, a new door, like, if you log that would work for us, for coaches to have their own code. And then it logs who is accessing what when, I have seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. And that includes purchasing kind of like the initial, here's all the food we would need for like the initial thirty days to get it going.
So, if we would give you ten thousand dollars in capital outlay, would that be enough?
Um, I think that that would be enough for getting the concession stand going.
And the field usable.
And the field usable.
You're talking about electrician in this too, right?
Yes, yeah, and we, I mean, we're hoping to find people who are willing to do any things or get some sponsorships in there, but we wanna be able to make sure that we get the money that we need to be able to get a usable, so that we can start charging the fee for the teams. I think that ten thousand would cover what we need to get the field usable and the concession stand going. And then additionally for painting, the restrooms.
We need a five, we need a total number, not just.
So, what for the whole year?
Okay, so for everything, including getting the concession stand and build everything going, we have quoted out twenty thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents with the shed. Yes, that includes getting a shed, which would either be the concession stand or a storage shed.
And that, what?
That includes.
Twenty-one, what's your number?
Twenty thousand eight hundred?
Yes, eight hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-two.
Twenty-one thousand. Does that count Greenwood Days?
Yes.
So I'd say we take out that seventy-five thousand, put in twenty-one thousand, cap one, well, take off seventy-five hundred, put that into the park and rec expenses for that, because that's where the park, for Greenwood.
Yeah, that's our five hundred W budget, that's basically the Greenwood Days.
Yeah, so leave that there and take twenty-one thousand minus seventy-five hundred for the capital outlay.
Okay.
The thirteen five, thirteen capital outlay.
I had a thought when you guys were talking about that shed and stuff too, it's like, ten right, ten shed, you could almost mount the scoreboard to the top of the shed. Because that, that's pretty heavy scoreboard, it's gonna be on, it'll have to be mounted in the ground, maybe. But you also, you look into the Eagle Scouts sometimes. It'll have to be mounted in the ground, maybe, but you also, you look into the Eagle Scouts, sometimes they need projects.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so.
We would buy the material and they would build the shed, I'm not saying that's something.
Yeah, no, we flipped into quite a few things, like, um, if we would get someone who would, people who like build sheds or make sheds, if they would want to put their name on it.
Sponsorship.
Sponsorships, we're also looking at the idea of getting like full field sponsorship, some banners on the back, meaning like X amount that we use towards these things. We just wanna ensure that we're able to do what we need to do to be able to get the field usable for next year.
You got that, Michael?
Yep.
Thirteen five and seventy-five hundred?
Yep.
And you're gonna leave the se- thirty-seven five up there for the fifty-fifty grand just in case?
Well, I was gonna cut that, 'cause you cut that seventy-five thousand.
Right.
So do you wanna leave the seventy-five in?
No, Joey took them at the grand for the thirty-five, right?
That's up there in the revenue part?
Yeah, that was, that was up, that that was.
In case somebody gave, oh, gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, that was tied to the seventy-five thousand.
Okay.
Be done, so.
Yeah, you, you, gotcha, okay.
Next page is the street. Your highway allocation that goes in there is just over a hundred thousand. All your city sales tax dividends is about a hundred forty thousand, your total revenue is two hundred sixty-three thousand. I don't have any budget for any equipment or improvements yet.
Okay, probably a new mower, I would say, ten grand.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say.
Last time we spent like eighty-seven hundred.
And then we'll probably do some streets, 'cause we had no West Street going out of town, it's really bad over there, so it's probably.
We budgeted three hundred thirty thousand a year ago, I'd only spent like twenty thousand on the street stuff.
Right, well, we just couldn't get nobody, everybody was booked up, so. So, we'll start earlier, earlier in this time, so, we just, the one and six-year plan was just accepted too, so. Have we told about West Street?
Yeah.
So like we budgeted twenty thousand a year for repairs, and we haven't been, I mean, this year was the highest year, we're at seventy-five hundred, we budgeted ten thousand for supplies. Um, the highest we've had in the prior four years is about sixty-five hundred dollars, so we've got plenty of cushion there, so we'll buy ten thousand in for the mower, so the only thing I really need is what do you want for the improvements for street work?
I'm gonna say. We're gonna have that issue, we're here, one hundred eighty thousand for streets. Repairs, or mill and overlay.
Okay.
Capital improvements, yeah.
I was gonna say, 'cause when we, uh, sewer issue we do down here, we're gonna have street repairs.
In the alley.
I know, but I gotta tear up from.
Yeah, that won't be much, that, that would be worth it, we don't use all that over there.
So you just wanna do a hundred eighty for?
Street work.
Yep. We can do more, you've got plenty of street pad.
Right. Or do you wanna put a little more?
Should be around that to two.
Yeah.
Okay. Page eleven is the keynote, probably there's about fifteen thousand, um, the keynote expense, if we need better, we'd budget five thousand a year for both of those. I put seventy-five thousand for capital outlay, we budgeted that a year ago, uh, basically, if something comes up that we wanna use the keynote dollars for. Do you have budget authority, it's kind of just cushion for other departments, so if we're over, we get a cushion, so. Page twelve is the CDA, it's where your TPCOS, uh, so they should project your four hundred eight thousand. Um, the big part of it should be dropped off this next year, so we're down about thirty-eight thousand in proceeds for next year. The way we stress we have there is a bond payment of thirty-eight thousand a year that we made. If you accumulate a lot of cash, we need to figure out where that needs to go, sort of, to get that moved, so that just sitting there, or use that somehow. Page thirteen is the electric. Fees sales are about either ten thousand a year, the sales tax, that's just the Nebraska sales tax on the, on the sales, so that's just in and out, two revenue expense. Um, wages are about twenty thousand for next year, uh, purchase power, we project about four hundred two thousand this year, I, we always budgeted really high on that, and K K would increase our rates, we have four hundred thirty thousand budgeted. Um, repairs and maintenance for thirty-five thousand a year on that, uh, supplies were at twenty-five thousand, and we only spent about five thousand this year.
Where's our line item for, uh, the green light contract?
So, that goes under the contract labor, 'cause we need a fourth line from the bottom, uh, four, three, five, fifty, that's where all that green lights has been going through between the electric water and sewer.
Gotcha.
It's all contained for that.
Okay, yeah.
And then a lot of that comes back in the repair reimbursement on the revenue, and we can finish for some of that. Uh, so, on that green light, we're projecting spending forty thousand this year, I don't know what you want, if you want, we need to budget for that, or what?
Trying to new project, we're gonna have a new project, so they're gonna have.
Well, this is only percentage, 'cause water, sewer, electric, all get, the streets get percentage, so.
No, uh, fees gonna do it, 'cause we put it in the other thing here monthly, for him, we're paying that fee now, another thousand dollars a year, or whatever, yeah, I know, I think it was Wolf's Hill.
But, I would say, he hasn't said about a rate or increase, but I would budget maybe a little bit. Maybe a five or, five or seven percent increase.
Three each, a month.
Maybe five thousand for each entity, increase.
To increase, to increase what, by five thousand?
The green light.
Okay.
Number.
Okay, so I agree, we're spending about forty thousand this year, you wanna make that to forty-five thousand next year?
'Cause each one should be about the same, right?
Um, yeah, we're about forty thousand in electric, we didn't have very much water, we were only about sixty-eight hundred dollars in water, sewer was about thirty-three thousand. Some reason water didn't have much this year.
How'd they increase each one of, God, I was thinking that was all split out twenty percent each.
It should be. Plus.
General, electric, water, sewer, streets, by twenty percent.
Yeah, that should be split evenly across the board.
Yeah, and the electric, there was a twenty-eight thousand dollar payment to green lighting back in October, that was all electric, that one wasn't split.
I think that was a storm.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, yes, that was a storm, clean up and repair.
He must itemize all that, if it's water, sewer, electric, or streets?
Yeah, it'd be probably, you just put it out between all of them, so. Anything else, any other?
Well, the sewer's gonna be roughly the same, because we gotta do the same thing on the other side, so it'll be roughly the same, but I would add a little bit, like, like I said.
Okay.
Materials, anything about?
Well, we gotta do the same thing we did on the north side, and it's, that'd be next year.
A quick thing on the, back to electric though, um, what was the other percentage that you're bumping, or thinking that the, uh, fees are gonna go up for actually, uh, purchasing electricity? 'Cause that, we're about, we got one year to go on our contract, what we could need, and it's one year to go. 'Cause we're looking at trying to purchase directly from another.
I don't know if we ever signed to him.
We haven't, because.
We gotta give him three-year notice.
Well, that's, the thing here is that with the contract coming up, it was year to year, and they wanted us to sign him on a thirty-year, I said we never gonna do that. But, um, I know rates around here have jumped four to seven percent, and that's why I was just wondering what you threw in here.
For on our expense side?
Yeah.
Expense side, yeah, for buying electricity. Down there on the O P P, electric, though.
Yeah, so I just, we've been budgeting four hundred thirty thousand for the last several years.
Three seventy-one, four oh four, four oh two.
It's like a six and a half percent increase over this year.
And should be close, but they, they said they wanna five point seven percent?
Okay, yeah, we read, that's actually all six point seven is what it counts out, so.
Okay, and that should be fine then, for now, for the.
Any other electric equipment, or any other work that needs to be done?
I put a little bit of money in the capital outlay. What did we put in last year?
Um.
Thirty thousand?
We didn't have, we had thirty thousand budgeted for improvements, we did, capital is gonna be, equipment improvements will basically be improvements to the, to the electric system.
Okay, let's go to improvements, huh?
So you wanna do?
I know right off the bat, we need one or two more transformers, right? So, that's six grand to pop there for transformers.
I'd say another fifty thousand.
Yeah. 'Cause we got all the primary done over here, working on stuff over there, a couple other holes we need, definitely, um.
I would overestimate, because there's gonna be more storms than we said.
I'll say that, you got a place for us.
Transformers, six, if you get three of them, that's eighteen.
At some point, are we gonna start doing that underground?
That's just what I'm saying, uh, ten thousand dollars, what, two hundred?
Maybe seventy-five?
Ten thousand, seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five for this year, can we evaluate that shift?
Do I do that?
Yeah. If it'll be high now, we have to amend it, so.
Next page is water. Revenue there is about a hundred fifty-five thousand. Repairs we got set at twenty thousand, this year we had a bunch of repairs, we were actually closer to thirty-five thousand, the two years before this, we were only a few under ten thousand. Supplies, we got fifteen thousand budgeted, projected to spend about twelve thousand this year. Contract labor, I had five in there, but we'll increase that, we might add five each one with that, and. We budgeted a hundred and five thousand for improvements this year. I don't really have anything for, uh, for actual equipment improvements for next year, so.
Uh, for that, so, definitely want to skip about fifteen thousand in there, um, specifically after buying new, uh, ball controller, V F D, 'cause that was something Alan was talking about.
Yeah, the motor rate, variable speed.
Right, so put V F D on, yeah.
Do we have to paint anything?
Uh, the water tower, painting?
We just had him inspected, he said it's still good for three to four more years.
Okay.
So we got a little bit of time, so.
Okay. Blending station stuff is the only.
We also need to have the guy come in and dive in there, check the tower, I can't remember what that guy. I'd say the, what'd you say, fifteen?
The one I was at this morning, they were quoting five thousand.
I just say seven, I think seven is what we.
I was gonna say, just add ten, this is a fifteen.
A year ago, we did budget seventy-five thousand for blending station, that was part of that hundred and five.
Right, we did put it in, and so some of that, I don't know how it was allocated, so.
So we did do the blending station, so not that, uh, fire retardation.
Most of that was labor.
We must've just coded that to, who did that work for us?
Greenlight?
Yeah, okay.
So I'm sure that's repair and maintenance, and we might've had most of the parts on hand anyway, but.
So I'd say I think we did, and that's where we, for bundle approval, it's where it come down to, it's just that flash component, right?
Okay, so, previous, we just have the V F D and diaphragm design, or do you wanna?
I think a thirty thousand total.
Okay.
No way.
Last page is the sewer, revenue there is about a hundred twenty-three thousand a year. We have twenty-five thousand budgeted for repairs.
We got quite a few parts bought already, but I would say leave, I'd say thirty thousand for, uh, improvements.
Okay.
And I would leave your labor, I'd just raise it to forty.
Okay.
On the, on the contract labor?
Yep.
Where do we put in for like sewer jetting?
Um, that would probably go and use that contract labor also.
Okay, so you might wanna raise that another, I'd go to fifty. 'Cause I know we had it done last year, I just don't know where they put it, it would've been under repair maintenance, maybe.
The only thing that hit our needs prepared maintenance this year was the brush generator for thirty-eight thousand.
Uh, we got that money back with, uh, insurance, quite a bit of it.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, there it is, thirty-six eight oh one, repair and reverse.
I think that's what, we had to pay that out, I think, over up late at that, because.
We had to pay it out of pocket, then they reimbursed. And it says up there at the top, thirty-six eight oh one.
Who does your jetting for, yeah?
Uh, Spicklemarkers. I know they were out. They do it four times, or the railroad tracks, they, they did it twice down there in the alley. Between six and seven. I know they brought.
Yeah, the only thing to them was eleven hundred dollars in April, so.
That was probably the one they did in the alley.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't make that hundred, they were fifty between the night and the day, and we wired thirty thousand for improvements, is there, anything else?
I think that's it, I'm aware of.
We have all the material we have for the sewer project?
They got most of it, but he's putting in that.
We've got the pipe.
He's putting in that same number.
Okay.
For the improvement. I think that it's gonna be. Probably. Another fifteen, I'll probably get all the parts bought again, 'cause we got quite a bit of it still. 'Cause we ordered double there for a while, but then they, they forgot to order the ones, they kept saying, oh, you need this, you need this, you need this, and all them parts they did again.
How many, uh, concrete rooms we got from that hole, 'cause I know we got a couple of them there sinking, or need to be adjusted?
Oh, they're cheap. Usually they, pavers could, whoever does it, they come in, they cut it out, then they put asphalt once they get set, 'cause they gotta make it square. They bring all them parts, pieces, that'd be streets anyway. Other than that, I can do it. I think you may also have something ahead.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Michael.
Yes.
You guys have any other questions, parking rack, or library, or?
With the follow-up, we heard that there's three meetings, like budget meetings, is it, is it?
We used to do a three meeting.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Because, 'cause he comes out with all our numbers.
Oh, okay.
We had to guess at the number before, but he's actually out.
He comes prepared.
We used to do like two or three a night.
Take her out.
Yeah.
Yep. Why, you make your job easier. Why don't you make your job easier?
Then we just vote it in like towards.
Yeah.
Um, Sophie, do you know, like what we have for the concession stand, is that gonna be in it? What, like what, like there's like cups and some other things like that, but are all the supplies that we currently have for the concession stand?
Thank you.
Will we find that in there?
It's not like in the back.
It's not like.
I don't know, there's anything considered, like that concession stand has not been used, to my knowledge, for probably, what, eight to ten years?
Soccer was the last one, so I didn't.
Yeah.
And they, and they took, yeah, their own stuff back, like they had their own refrigerator and then they took that.
Yeah, well, cause we went in there and there was like some random things, like cups and some other things, and I was like, I know that it's a user force, like maybe there's some equipment somewhere that we don't know about, but.
No.
I was assuming that what was in there wasn't what we got.
Yeah. Um, quick thing for you two, when I told Tom here last meeting, um, I gotta dig through my archives and so forth, but. I've got all of the plans and everything to update the electrical in that building. Uh, that we can put out for bid, get prices on and so forth, it is, that way we know what so, things are going on here. And the new business that's over here did, uh, already state that anybody here in town will give a ten percent discount right off the top because it's local, so.
I mean, I'm not, we're not married to that.
Right.
The concession stand.
I know, but I'm just saying.
But it's existing, I mean, what is it?
I think it might be easier to.
Yeah, and Jim had mentioned like the possibility of getting a grant to help us, like we get another building to get water to it, to get. Electrical, so we could use a new building as a concession stand, uh, and maybe not on that, um, as a grant from the basic corner, but. But, I mean, it wasn't as bad as what people made it sound.
Yeah, I mean, I.
It's usually.
Yeah, but it's not.
I cleaned out a couple years ago, I think.
Yeah, I couldn't, huh. I'm like, hold by, you have to, something, hold me out. We, we opened that door very close, so.
It's been very slowly. I made Brian a touchy, he was maintenance, and that happened a few years ago. Oh, my gosh.
They turned out, I still bet it.
Yeah.
Um, thank you, this was very enlightening.
Oh, yeah.